Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the room and establish your quorum?
Good morning. Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy. Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, May 22nd, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Please also silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you. Vice Chair Frost, will you do us the honor of leading us in the pledge this morning, please?
Certainly. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In compliance with the directives of the County State and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, this meeting is livestreamed and closed to the public. Temporary procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. Members of the public are encouraged to submit public comments electronically, which will be accepted until the adjournment of the meeting. The Clerk's office will distribute electronic comments to board members, and comments will be filed in the record. Send comments to the clerk@boardclerk@saccounty.net, and that's SAC County spelled S-A-C-C-O-U-N-T-Y. Include the meeting date, agenda item number, or write "off-agenda matter" if the comment is related to an item that is not on the posted agenda. It is optional to include your first and last name. Please visit the Board of Supervisors Public Meetings webpage for detailed information related to agendas and general information at BOSSPublicMeetings.SACCounty.net. And then with that, let's see, a few brief announcements, not announcements, but I guess thank yous. I just wanted to take this morning, the meeting this morning, to thank everyone that is involved with food provision in the time of COVID-19. Everyone from our local food banks and regional food banks to people that we know fairly intimately, and those are the people that we see each time we go to the grocery store, whether it be clerks behind the register or courtesy clerks that are helping to bag our groceries. These are also our frontline workers, and they're doing a terrific job carrying on with their responsibilities in a very difficult time. So thanks to everyone that is responsible for making sure that food distribution goes uninterrupted in our community. With that, first item.
Okay, for your consent matters, items 1 through 31. For item five, you are introducing an ordinance amending sections 2.12.010, .020, and .030. Chapter 2.12, Title II of the Sacramento County Code relating to the reorganization of the Department of Finance and the Department of Revenue Recovery. You're waiving full reading and continuing to June 2nd for adoption. Item H, you're also introducing an ordinance to amend Sacramento County Code sections 2.13.020 and 030 to transfer the duties of the county's Health Information Portability and Accountability Act, the HIPAA Privacy Official Form, from the county clerk recorder to the county chief information officer, and designate the chief information officer as the county's health insurance HIPAA privacy official and security official. You're also waiving full reading and continuing to June 2nd for adoption. And then for item 20, you're adopting an ordinance amending chapter 16.80, .81, .83, .84, .85, .87, .150, 155, and 160 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the exemption of development impact fees for certain accessory dwellings. You waived reading on this on April 21st. On item 23, you are also adopting an ordinance, this is the county service area number 10, benefit zone four, to providing a procedure for collection of a service charge for certain miscellaneous extended transportation-related services. You waived reading on this item on May 5th. And that concludes my notes for your consent matters.
Okay, going from my left to right, I'll start with Supervisor Natoli. Do you have anything that you'd like to pull for consideration on consent?
Yeah, just a couple of items. I talked with county executive on item 2022, and then also make a comment on item 24, so.
22 and 24. Item 22 is the contract for the module 4 to 5 Perimeter Road Kiefer landfill final contract acceptance.
I had had a question on one of the change orders, and I just had a chance to speak with Mr. Gill and Mr. Hartwig before the start of the meeting this morning. I just wanted to raise the issue that was noted in the staff report regarding some of the work was performed that we ended up having to actually go back in and replace related to the capture of some of the off-gassing. And I would just note that, and I don't, Mr. Hartwig, if you just wanted to make a brief comment about that, and then we can go forward. I intend to support the item, obviously work's been done, but it's one of those that it would seem to me that, you know, working with whoever consulted on this as it relates to an installation, then we ended up catching it before the work was done, having to then expend additional money, and so.
Thank you Supervisor Natoli, yeah, for looking at that one. What they had designed was conceptually correct in putting a flex line in underground so that we don't have a broken gas line. Unfortunately, what was spec'd as the material ended up being one that wasn't allowed to be buried, so staff caught that. Unfortunately, it had been already installed, so we replaced it with a stainless line that's rigid but has the strength and has the long-life characteristics that we were actually looking for in a gas system like this. So we will be discussing that with the consultant on the issue that came up with having to replace that during construction.
Okay, yeah, I got it. I would encourage us to do that. I think, again, you know, you can't catch everything, but it was important, and particularly you've got that far along, it's actually constructed and had to tear it out, and we paid to have it torn out and replaced with the new stainless steel line, so, okay, good. Thank you. So I had on that one, then I had item 24.
Okay, for item 24, this is to mitigate impacts from COVID-19 to restaurants by adopting a resolution finding and overriding public interest to allow the planning director to issue emergency temporary use permits for restaurant outdoor seating.
And I would just, again, note, certainly thank our staff for their work on this. I'm supportive of it, but the question relates to processing time. This is, can be done by the planning director, you know, assuming some of the action that's contemplated for item 32, and folks reopening, but maybe with the outdoor seating being, you know, an important part of getting back up to speed as it relates to food service facilities. Is this something that could be done over the counter immediately? Is there a cost associated with this? There's no mention of that. It talks about certainly the authority, and I'm, you know, glad to see that.
Our planning director's coming down.
Leanne Moffett, Planning Director. Yes, our intention would be that this would be over the counter and would be done pretty quickly. There may be a minor cost. We're kind of looking into that still. We haven't established whether we will be charging or not. We'd want to keep costs very low, if possible, because the whole point of this is trying to get restaurants open. One of the key provisions we do want is when there's, where we've been approached is some larger shopping centers where we have multiple restaurants and multiple other tenants. We really want to push the responsibility for figuring out the plan and how that works when you have multiple tenants and multiple operations onto the shopping center owner, so that they come to us with a plan, and then we simply sign that off.
I guess my point, and certainly the question, I appreciate the response, Leanne, is that we ought to make this as simple as possible, and again, if it's not a lot of processing, there's a cost to collecting monies, too. I mean, so if we charge a very low fee, time to get that through the various processes that goes through to actually get deposits and so forth. It would seem to me in this time, this is one of those things from economic development, but certainly from a support of our community and certainly restaurant operators and, you know, those they employ and the service they provide to folks, getting this up and going. I don't have a problem with having, in a shopping center setting, folks, you know, having a coordinated approach. That makes sense, too. But I guess, there was no mention of that here, so I don't know if you need some direction around that. Obviously, you know, you're a general fund-supported and large-part department, but you have the authority, I imagine. Again, I don't see a large cost. If you do this over the counter, somebody comes up with a good plan, it comes before you, or you're designated, you sign it off, they're good to go, because they want to get open.
We do have the authority. If we run into any kind of issues, of course, we'll come back to the board, but we have the authority to work.
Okay. Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Frost?
Yes, and also relating to item 26, the timeline on, or was that 24?
24. 24.
I have a comment on 26 also. But the timeline, as they lift the COVID order, is there a timeline that they will have to unwind? Some people might expand outdoors and enjoy the privilege of it and want to keep it, and so will it be?
So this is really intended to give us flexibility to allow them to encroach into, like, required parking or other areas on a temporary basis only during the emergency? And if they want to do more of a permanent outdoor seating area, that would be something separate.
Okay. And, okay, great, thank you. And I just wanted to give a shout out on item 26 to Liz Bellis and the Regional Park staff to congratulate them for their progress on bringing some sustainable farming programs to Gibson Ranch. I'm excited about it, and I know the community will be also. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. I'd like to let the clerk know to show me his recusing on items two and six.
Okay.
Relative to potential business conflict of interest.
Got it.
Supervisor Kennedy doesn't have any comments? Okay, I do want to make a comment on item 13, please.
Item 13, authority to accept $133,500 from the Confluence Regional Partnership Program for the continued funding of sanitation services at North A Street campus. Retroactively amend existing agreement with First Step Communities to include an additional amount of $43,800 effective April 1, 2020 through June 30, 2020, and increase the renewal agreement with the First Step Communities effective July 1 through June 30, 2021 in the amount of $89,700.
Great, thank you. I certainly intend to support the recommendation. I just want to take this opportunity, as I did one-on-one with the CEO during my briefing, but I want to say it publicly, and remind all of our staff as it relates to the provision of services for those that are suffering homelessness, that as it relates to services that are provided specifically in the River District, in the district that I represent, I want to make sure that we will continue to work constructively, productively with the River District there. I've given them my commitment several times, and I will continue to give my commitment as I believe that there is a concentration of services that I'm sure is very much appreciated and very worthwhile, I'll be the first to say that, in the River District, but there's no denying that there is a concentration that is, it's unparalleled. You can't find that kind of focused concentration of services anywhere else in the county in terms of a particular district. So I've given my commitment to Jenna Abbott, the president of the, or the executive director of the River District, as well as her board, that they are to be consulted whenever we adjust service provision, or if we're thinking about introducing new services, they are to be consulted and part of that planning, so. Thank you. All right. With that, is there a motion on consent? It's been moved by Supervisor Kennedy.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Frost, and the record will show that Supervisor Peters is recusing herself from the items she'd mentioned. Please vote.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from items two and six for a potential conflict of interest. For item 32, this is a letter of attestation relating to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Dr. Bealenson will make the presentation. I just want to set the stage. As the board members know, we have been working very closely with the governor and his office on moving through the different stages that he had outlined, and today we're here to ask an attestation to our public health order on how we will progress through stage two, what our intent will be once we have that done. There's a letter that the chair of the board will submit to the governor saying that the board met, if you do approve this, that we were asking his permission to move through phase two. Dr. Bealenson is going to go through what that really means, what the attestation gets to, and the goal is then we go through phase two, keep working with the governor and his office to get us to stage three where both of our businesses are still at. But this has been a very deliberative process, and I think one of the things that I've heard repeatedly from board members is that science should be what ends up dictating this, and Dr. Bealenson and his staff have done a great job in looking at it, what we can meet, and as of yesterday, we had one issue that we were not, we were not going to be able to meet, which was going to be no deaths in the last 14 days. The governor did announce yesterday that he is relaxing that. That means everything that you're going to hear from Dr. Bealenson, we can demonstrate that we meet that. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Bealenson.
Before you begin, Dr. Bealenson, I believe Supervisor Kennedy has a commoner question.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, through Dr. Bealenson's leadership, as well as Mr. Gill's, you know, Sacramento, I think, has been exemplary of what a county should be for this nation, and so thank you very much, both of you two gentlemen, for the leadership, and Mr. Wagstaff as well. I've spent more time on the phone with the three of you than I care to ever do again, but really, I'm very proud to be a supervisor in Sacramento County right now.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bealenson?
And I'm joined by Dajja Casiri, who's, of course, our health officer, who will be putting out the health officer's order probably on Thursday. There's really not much to add besides what Mr. Gill's already added. A criteria the governor came out with yesterday, Sunday and Monday, actually don't allow for us to loosening, don't allow for loosening up, but actually change the criteria, so we meet all the criteria and we don't need to variance. So that we've attested to the fact that you guys have attested through us that we have given the appropriate data, and if the data is validated, then that's epidemiological data. It's data about how we're taking care of our vulnerable populations. It's contact tracing, et cetera, et cetera. There's all these different criteria, I think about 10 of them. We've met them all. We can therefore move into, further into phase two. Phase two B, as we're calling it, includes restaurants and potentially shopping malls. We have a little bit of a discussion about that. And then phase two also includes the things that the governor had already talked about, like retail, or the curb side pickup, and things like that. So the phase two B also includes restaurants, as I'm sure you are well aware. I've been on town hall meetings with a few of you to talk about the restaurants, and so the restaurants will be open with restrictions at the time of our order, probably on Thursday. So that's really it.
I think one of the things I want to underscore that Dr. Bealenson said, there is some confusion about what we're doing today. We are not having the health order go away. Health order is just going to get amended to allow additional businesses to open. And health order, we're working on most likely Thursday. The date is 22nd, but that's what we're striving is for 22nd.
That's when the current one expires.
Expires.
Correct.
And we're going to make sure that when we have this go out to our media and other outlets, that everybody knows that this is not down to May 23rd, there's no health order. Health order is still there with the amendments that we are bringing forward to you today.
So, so I know Supervisor Natoli's in the queue here with some comments and questions, but because you brought up kind of, you know, the confusion factor, one of the most important parts of what we're doing today, besides the substantive impact of this, which is the adjustment to moving into stage two B, I believe it is, is making sure that the public has as much access to information and understanding of what we're doing as possible. So if we haven't already set in motion an effort to adjust our website and other means of communicating our response, I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we add to our FAQs, we perhaps make a separate link or a set of paragraphs that explain what the implications are for today's actions, should it be the pleasure of the board to move forward with this, so that we can kind of, you know, point folks as easily as possible, our constituents, to a single portal, so that they can have access to that information, they can have their questions answered. I know all of us are being inundated hourly with all kinds of questions, everything from can my restaurant open up for Memorial Day weekend, to, you know, what about barber shops? So I think it would be worthwhile to spend some time really thinking carefully about how we amend our website and other means of communicating this, you know, progressive response, including what we're doing today.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Supervisor Natoli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would certainly like to echo Supervisor Kennedy's comments, and thank Dr. Bealenson, Dr. Casiri, and your staff, and certainly Bruce Wagstaff's been, you know, very instrumental in a lot of discussions around what's before us today. A couple of things, again, I know that you were working on this right up until very last minute, as relative to the attestation and all the attachments that will be forward to the state. So I want to come back to the question relates to the health order and timing. Again, thank you, Dr. Bealenson, for participating in a couple of town halls that I've been involved in. The, if the revised health order is issued, obviously, prior to the 22nd, which is Friday, could we, with, I guess, reasonable confidence, give the indication to restaurants that they can reopen this weekend? I mean, it.
I think so. Any problem with that? Yes.
Okay. I think that's important. I mean, and again, I didn't, you know, it wasn't just to put you on the spot, but I think that's, you know, as we're talking about this today.
I think so.
Okay, so, because, you know, obviously Memorial Day weekend, and I know, obviously, it may present health concerns for interactions, but I think, you know, when we see communities and counties all around us, some of them obviously more rural, but not the large metropolitan center that we have in Sacramento, I think, as it relates to food service, it's very, very, very key and very critical, so that's, that's good news. I did want to ask about, on the attachment seven, and I know you touched on it, Dr. Bealenson, and I just wanted to be understanding that, be the, I guess, the last page on attachment seven, where you talk about how our plan may differ only slightly from the state's resilience roadmap. I just wanted to ask about the top one there, where it's the shopping malls and swap meets, and that California has reopened, expanded to stage two. You kind of touched on that. We say reopen in stage three. Could you maybe elaborate on that, and maybe there's some distinction there that might be important to folks as well?
And I guess to Supervisor Cernan's point, that there's, to be honest, and without throwing anybody under the bus, it's been a very rapidly moving situation. You know about the zoo, it happened yesterday.
Right.
I'm particularly defensive about the zoo. And I'll just give you this as an example. So in phase two, according to CDPH, they allowed outdoor galleries, outdoor activities with modifications, and outdoor space utilization. And when I was asked by the zoo, whether they, they had a plan that was, that had significant modifications, restrictions, et cetera, and I couldn't think of another outdoor gallery other than the zoo. However, I found out yesterday that zoos are specifically, with galleries and zoos, are in phase three, as well as the phase two outdoor gallery. So just, just as a point, that it's not, the frequently asked questions are useful, and we will certainly put them out, but this is a rapidly moving target, and there are some confusions. The same is true with the shopping malls. So I was just talking to Olivia, right before I came up here, because shopping malls are in phase two, strip malls are in phase three. But, so we've got to, we've got to come up with a coherent answer, and it's not always extremely easy, just to point that out. But we will certainly come out with FAQs as best as we possibly can.
The phases, then, those are controlled by the state? We have our stages, and they call their spaces, we call our stages, or vice versa?
It's the same thing.
Same thing, okay.
I think Supervisor Natoli, what the confusion was in the onset, there was not a coordinated effort. Other folks had different stages. What the state did is basically came up with a unified stages. What has happened with that, as Dr. Bealenson's pointing out, when him and his staff have been working on it, what came out as stage one, stage two, and stage three, I think almost three weeks ago, the governor went in, based on the data that he was getting and feedback, he moved some from stage three to stage two. So the restaurants, the original stage three morphed into two B, and that's created some of this confusion that comes in, is what's really in stage three, what has gone into two B. And I think the zoo example that Peter uses as an example, same thing goes with swap meets and shopping malls. It's an ongoing process that him and his staff work with the state on what stages we're in, and it's a pretty fluid situation on how some of these things go back and forth. And that's what he keeps an eye on, is that, and then we update the FAQs as need be on that.
Because I think it's certainly, you know, and again, I know this is centered and focused around, you know, public health, but when it comes to a mall, a large shopping mall versus a strip mall, assuming you use the same protocols relative to sanitation, to masks for employees, and social distancing and so forth, you know, I think there certainly becomes an argument for equity, is that, you know, so the center at, you know, you know, the intersection of, you know, A and B streets, you know, you may have the same practices, it may even have less traffic than, you know, a Galleria, for example, and yet that one, the big one gets to open, and the little one, you know, the smaller, with smaller units, a lot of family-owned operations, you know, smaller franchises potentially, they are still stuck in a phase three. And that's part of the, I think, again, where I think we as representatives at the local level, you know, and again, through, certainly through the communication that county executive and you, Dr. Bealenson, Dr. Casiri, and through the channels that you communicate with folks, that's important. That's an important distinction, because it's just like, and that's what we're hearing more, I'm hearing from folks on, you're hearing from, obviously, because you're getting some of those request sizes. So I think that's one of the things that we need to, you know, voice, is that, you know, if you're going to make this equitable, you know, in these categories that you put in your stages, then there.
Let me give you another example.
Okay.
I don't know if that's okay. Fitness studios versus gyms. So part of this is, Olivia is dealing with, like, the pure, pure science of it, to be honest. I'm dealing with all the letters I get from you guys every single day, every hour, and I'm sure you guys get them, and with excellent arguments as to why something should open or is not open. We've talked, we've all, we've all talked. And there's a huge economic dislocation, which we are very well aware of, and I'm particularly well aware of, and we're very lucky that we have our jobs and we can operate in this kind of a situation, but there's so many people, as you know, that can't. And so I'm having to come out on sides that Olivia's folks don't necessarily agree with me on. I'm just being openly honest. So for example, fitness studios, as opposed to gyms, fitness studios can be, I'm just being very frank here, can have pre-registration of people, clients. They have 250 square foot per client. They have a maximum of eight clients. They have disinfection every hour on the hour, et cetera, et cetera. Those are very different than big box gyms like Cal Fitness, right? Where there's tons of people coming in all the time, it's going to be very hard to have social distancing. So fitness studios, I approved, that's in stage three, but it seems to me that we, that we need a little bit of flexibility to be able to look at how things actually play out on the ground, rather than have this dictated from afar. And Sonia Angel's wonderful, and so is Mark Gailey, who are the two top people at DHHS and CDPH, but we're having to deal with it on the ground, and I think you guys get the point. There are some things that can't open right now, there's some things that have huge gathering places, as we've talked about, that'll be phase three, but phase two, it seems to me it can be a little bit, have some flexibility. I'm sure I'm getting myself in trouble with the state by saying this, but I'm just trying to.
Then don't say it.
I was about ready to pull the hook on that one. I think we get the point. We get the comments. Peters in contact, Dr. Casiri is in it, I'm in it, Bruce. We get the point on that one, and we'll continue with the flexibility and the partnership we have with the state.
Okay. And again, certainly, I appreciate your frankness, and, you know, hopefully you don't get in trouble, but I mean, again, I, again, you know, you work under the employees of Sacramento County, and again, and the board of supervisors, the elected body here, and, you know, we have an appropriate role in this, as do you, and as, you know, obviously the governor and others. I wanted to ask. and others. I wanted to ask another question, though. This kind of goes to the geographical distinctions in a, in a given area. I mean, we're a vast county, a thousand square miles, and, yes, we're largely suburban and metropolitan with the population, but we do have rural communities. And I know we got a letter as recently as late yesterday afternoon--
Well--
--from the Galt Chamber of Commerce, and the Galt City Council sent us, you know, a letter last week on behalf of their community. And I know that, you know, again, that's an incorporated city, but there are communities, you know, in other parts that, you know, have some physical separation. People live there, but they may have small markets, may have other, other businesses, small restaurants, and so forth. Do we have any, when it comes to flexibility in county as relates to those categories or stage, stages, because I think that's part of the distinction, is that, particularly as we see other more rural counties, you know, opening up, that, you know, some of these areas that are, you know, Galt's 25 miles, you know, you're going to have to remove from the, you know, the city of Sacramento. Ileton is even further, for example. But do you and, and Dr. Cassiri have, or is it just, when it's blanketed as relates to opening up or not, relate entirely to--
The county, is the county, is the jurisdiction. However, Dr. Cassiri made the point in, in trying to get this attestation done before, before they changed the criteria, that we are unlike most large counties, and that we're surrounded by small counties, all of whom had been gotten variances, if you will, at the prime. And so she made that point to the state--
Okay.
--that that was why we should get, should be treated sort of separately, and the state responded with appropriate criteria. So the answer to your question is no, but the answer to the question is a bit large, is we've been able to get, go further than we would have thought we would have.
Okay. So, but we're not, we don't get additional flexibility as relates to rural portions of Sacramento County that might be very--
No.
No, no, we do not.
And to that point, Rancho Cordova, so you would think Rancho Cordova would not have a huge outbreak, would not have a huge number of cases, yet they're one of our three biggest zip codes.
Right.
So, we don't want to, you know--
No, that's more suburban. I'm talking about--
Understand, understand.
A couple of quick questions, and it just, as relates to, and I know we've had some input, as, and again, with the Memorial Day weekend, you know, almost upon us here, that, you know, for RV parks and campgrounds, in which we have some of those, certainly even in the more suburban setting, but we certainly have those in, you know, areas in the delta and in rural locations. We've gotten, you know, a good deal of correspondence. Are those, I guess I take, those are in, in stage three, the RV?
There's nothing, that's part of the issue. There's nothing specific. I actually have the stages in front of me. You could consider them picnic areas, which would be stage three, or you could, stage two. I don't really know--
Okay, so you could take a look at that.
We'll take a look at that. Yeah, we're looking at that particular one, because again, as Peter said, that's part of that flexibility we have, but working with the state, where does that fit in, and what stage can we put that in?
Okay. I guess the last question, and, you know, we'll know better on Thursday, when the order comes out, but, you know, we're hearing of different jurisdictions up and down the state. Some of them are allowing health orders expire, some are extending, talking about going to August the 1st, I think, in Southern California. Any idea where we may land on that right now, and is it going to be--
Our intent is to have a health order that replaces the one that runs out on May 22nd.
To replace it, so we have a new one--
Yeah, we will--
But you don't have a date--
Yeah, we will keep our health order in place because--
21st.
Yeah. Our health order does give us some flexibility, that Peter and Dr. Cassiri and staff worked very hard to give us that. If we go to the state, it's a little bit different. Other jurisdictions did it. That was their strategy, but ours will be to keep our health order in place.
Okay. Last thing I would just say, I think to the chair's point, having, and again, we had one example, again, I don't know if it's, you know, maybe an outstanding example or not, but of at least one county that had that single portal, you know, with good information, it's updated, and, you know, you can direct it, folks to different ones, but I think that's really important, because, again, I think knowing where to go to get the information, and, you know, some of this can be many, many pages, but I think boiling it down is you, Dr. Beelinsen, Dr. Cassiri have, to try to keep that focus on Sacramento County, for those that are, you know, concerned about what happens--
So we do have that portal, which is there, and I think what Supervisor Turner was getting to is that what we are working on is that as we change, new information comes in, we go in there and change the information. But it's one point that you can get to, that gets you all the information you need, everything that's done with the action, hopefully the board will take today. We will amend that, do the FAQs. When we do the public health order, we'll amend that to give more information. So that portal is out there, and it's one of the more viewed county pages at this point. A lot of residents are going to that.
Is it very prominent? Is it easy to get to, easy to navigate?
Yes, it's right. It's a big header, right when you come in, and red says--
One of, one of the first things I suggested when the website was developed was, we need a big, you know, presence when you go to the homepage, so people know exactly where to go.
It's very obvious.
Is it?
After the meeting, I can--
Okay, that's fine.
Supervisor Frost.
Hi, Dr. Beelinsen. I want to thank you for all of your kindness through this, because you've really, even my constituents and business owners have noticed how hard you've tried to, how can we make this, how can I help you? And so we really appreciate that you tried. And I know I've been a bit of a pest, so appreciate the patience that you've had with me.
I'm more than happy to.
So, I had a question relating to contact tracing, because I originally felt that that related to containment--
Yeah.
And early on in this episode, when we had stopped travel from China to the US, that we were in containment mode at that time, and that we had gone beyond containment. And so what, my understanding where we are right now in this process with COVID-19 is that there is no way we can contain it. And so my question is, what is the governor's expect, what is the expectation of us with the contact tracing? What is it that you hope to accomplish with it?
So, a very good point, but actually, we do think we can contain it. We had the containment, it was the initial strategy. We had a lot of cases originally, and then we ended up going to mitigation, which was trying to prevent the disease getting to those most vulnerable, most vulnerable to the disease, those with underlying conditions and seniors. We've now done such a good job, Olivia and her staff have done such a good job, that we're now at between five and 15 cases a day only, so we can move back to, instead of 100 cases a day. So we can move back to containment now. And so what are, what happens is, Sue Frost tests positive for the virus. We come either telephonically or in person to talk to you through our contact tracers. Literally, one person comes to talk to you to find out who you've been exposed to, who's been in significant exposure, how much time you spent with them, whether you're wearing masks, et cetera. In the quarantines, those individuals, they get them tested. If they test negative, they're released. If they test positive, they isolate. And that's the way we actually can squash the epidemic from growing again, and we can actually contain it. That's why the contact tracing was part of the governor's criteria. So we actually think, and by the way, I don't know if you know this, I think you probably do from reading, from seeing the website, but there are a total of 15, as of yesterday, 15 people in the hospital with COVID symptoms in the entire county, 15 total people. So we've done a phenomenal job at bending the curve. We've almost broken the curve. And that, we have, all of our deaths in the last two weeks have actually been in long-term care facilities, which is tragic, but it shows us less in the community than it has been in the past. And our case rate continues to be low. So we've done an extremely good job. And because of that, we can actually do containment. I will caution everybody that because, because we have such good containment, I mean, such good numbers, et cetera, that we do not have a tremendous amount of immunity in this, in this jurisdiction, right? So we gotta, we're being judicious about opening up, because it's a cost-benefit analysis. There's going to be more infections as you open up, it just, there are, because you're going to have more face-to-face contact. So we've got to keep a very close look on it, which is why I've asked Olivia to have a dashboard every single day with cases, hospitals, ICUs, ventilators, deaths, contact tracing, how many people we have out doing the contact tracing, how many people are they seeing every day, so we can stay on top of this in case it blows up a little bit and goes off the rails, in which case we can pull back.
So, it's my understanding, then, that there is those that are more vulnerable, and I'm wondering if there has been any thought regarding opening to the younger, you know, the schools, the libraries, the vacation Bible school, the, those young people are my, it's my understanding, they can help us build our herd immunity.
They can, but the danger is that they often are, they are more likely to be asymptomatic, to not have symptoms than the general population, and so they can easily pass it without, without knowing of it, knowing it. So there's, this is Swedish example, which I think you're talking about, where they've kind of allowed people to roam free with some restrictions, except for seniors and those with underlying conditions. They have a higher death rate now, but it may be over time, that actually the United States has a higher death rate.
We don't know until it's over.
We don't know until it's over. And we, we don't have 2020 foresight, obviously, which is, this is, this is by far the most significant issue that I've dealt with in my 30 years in public health. And it's, there's a ton that we do not know.
What was your fitness versus gyms? Are you talking about in a gym, there's a whole lot of people, and fitness, there's a one person in a room working out?
Fitness studios, we maxed it at eight.
Okay.
They have to have 250 square feet, so they have plenty of social distance around them. You can't, and there's all sorts of other restrictions, which you can't do for a big gym.
And the summer is coming, and I'm getting questions about--
Pools.
Pools. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, so in--
And, and swimming classes, et cetera?
Right. So, I've been siding with the lap swimming, every other lap, every other lane, right? And that's it, right now, because you can't keep kids from playing together and conglomerating and congregating at a, at a pool. And so we would like to open the pools, but we can't for those reasons. Like, do you think that lap pools are probably reasonable? Although people do expire, you know, emit aerosolized thing, which is why we have a lane between everybody. But again, this is an example of trying to figure some flexibility and allow some places to reopen, to allow the economic benefits of them without, like, an entire gym, which is going to be impossible to clean. There's just no, I mean, I belong to Cal Fitness. I probably shouldn't say that. But it's just no way that it could be, it's like a Petri dish.
Okay. And I don't mean to hammer, but I'm trying to, for brevity purposes, I want to ask you about the stages and the stage two versus three, and businesses who are in stage three who question, you know, why can a dentist put his hand in someone's mouth and I can't put a comb through someone's hair?
Right.
Or, why can someone sit down with their neighbors for dinner, but I can't sit down and play cards with my neighbors? Can you speak to those stages, and specifically, is there a way we can be flexible that can allow the, some of the stage three businesses to fit into stage two, just by virtue of changing their business model a little bit, like outside, or whatever?
That's what I--
Sell food.
Pardon me?
Sell food.
Yes, sell food. Sell food, do whatever you do, sell food.
I mean--
Exactly.
And to just put a--
Kidding, I'm kidding.
To this, to this point, there are some small communities like Galt and Citrus Heights, where their biggest revenue source is, on the public side, is their retail, and some of their largest businesses, like the Card Room, that has 500 employees, or, you know, I'm just saying, they're dying to get back. So if there's a way we can be flexible and help them without hurting the cause--
I understand.
I think--
Trying to reach for straws here, but I'm trying to advocate for them.
We fully understand that, and that's part of the work that Dr. Beelinsen does with the state. We know those are the concerns out there. We're doing our best to manage the health and the economic side of this, and that point is, we understand that point.
Okay. Thank you. I wanted to just say, can you just, if there's a way, can we be flexible with them? And will tennis be opening?
Tennis is open.
Tennis is fully open?
Yes.
Okay.
Not doubles, singles, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Beelinsen.
Yeah.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you.
The point is very well taken, actually. It's a smart thing to do.
I know. I had a lot of people comment on it. Start selling energy drinks and bananas in the beauty salon. Yeah. I had a couple of questions, that most of my questions have been answered from previous questions, but I do want to repeat something, which is my gratitude to you and the county exec, and Steve Cantelmi, and Bruce, and, and all of our senior management for the incredibly difficult work. Close it down, open it up, answer all the questions in between. It's, it's, it's been a great experience for me to watch this team work together. I mean, there may be hair pulling going on behind the scenes, but we're not, we don't see it, and it seems like a pretty smooth, from the outside, a very smooth, and I know it's, has a lot of sacrifice for all of you. I do have a couple of questions, so. In the next order, are you going to be addressing gathering sizes?
Yeah, there's, there's not gathering sizes. There's no gatherings.
Well, yes, that's kind of the point.
Yeah. I mean, yes, we're addressing it as that, and that there are no changes in that. So there's the gathering, there's no, like, gathering, minimum gathering of six people outside of a family, for example. We're keeping it a stay-at-home or as a stay-at--
So, people who live alone will still not be allowed to have people over? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Wow.
That's no fun.
Not only no fun, I mean, it's, people are ignoring it.
It's the emotional aspects of it and all these sort of things, yeah.
Yeah. I know a lot of people who live alone, and, you know, they're lonely. When do you expect that will change?
That'll be in phase three. So let me give you a little phase one, two, three, four. And these are my predictions, my educated guesses, but not, you know, so don't hold me to it, although I was right on phase two. So phase two, we thought would happen in May, late May, which is obviously happening now, with May, phase two A and 2B. Phase three, which are going to be small gatherings, things like haircuts, et cetera.
Why are you looking at me when you say that?
Because you have hair, I do not.
Actually, I think Brenda's done a great job, by the way.
Yeah, touch my hair.
As an example, my daughter lives in Massachusetts. Stage one in Massachusetts is haircuts and barber salons. It's stage three here. That's the difference. So, stage three will probably be in the fall, is my guess, in the early fall, September or so. Phase four, which are large gatherings, things like 49ers games, River Cast games, Republic, large parades, large, large gatherings of 100 or 200 people are going to be stage four. And they probably won't be all the way until we have a vaccine, because the vaccine is at least a year off, maybe more. But it will be a period of time before we get to that. Don't shoot the messenger, just my strong suppositions as to how it plays out. So that, again, gets to the point, I'm probably getting the hook and being pulled off, but the need for flexi, I mean, there's, there needs to be some flexibility, and actually, support from the board would be helpful. Not that you're not being supportive, you're being very supportive, but in making some of the decisions, we may end up running up against some of the state. I'm just being frank. So, and now, we're about to pull me off--
If I may, one thing to point out is that Peter has been extremely successful working with the state folks, establishing some very positive contacts that have been very helpful to us. So this question you're raising, supervisor, as well as some of the other questions, we can continue to explore with them.
I think you need to, because over 30% of people in the state live alone, and--
I think, not to belabor that point, we'll continue to do that, the different stages. As Peter has mentioned, they have been pretty fluid, dates have changed with the data that comes in.
Yeah.
We will continue to work on that. I think that is an issue that we know from the onset, when we went to no gatherings, that that was an issue for folks that lived alone. We'll continue working with Peter, Peter will continue working with the state, see if there's some relaxation we can get on that. So we will absolutely pursue that.
Okay. Thank you. Then, a question I had, on the information that's on the website, the section called Sacramento County Numbers at a Glance, and it has an asterisk, and then talks about the confirmed cases, and then it has it by age group, and then to the right it has deaths. And it's 56 in Sacramento County. It says, individuals who died from complications of COVID-19 were either age 65 and/or-- of COVID-19 were either age 65 and/or had underlying health conditions or other risk factors." Does that mean no one under the age of 65 has died?
Who did not have an underlying condition.
What?
Who did not have an underlying condition.
Okay, so people under 65 who died had some other illness?
And they're very, very few. I'm not sure how many, but there are very few of them. They're almost all 65 and older.
Yeah. To Peter's point, there's only one or two that we had that were under 65, but there's an underlying condition that did it. Most of them are over 65.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask about, I know in just reading general statistics, that a lot of deaths are in skilled nursing and other areas where people of elderly people live. Is, so I'm curious as to, in those individuals who are over 65, were they all in congregate care or some?
Twenty-seven or 28 of them were. And that's what I was saying, over the last 14, in the last 14 days, all of deaths were in long-term care facilities.
Okay.
We are now testing in all sites that have had at least one staff or one resident positive, and we're going, we've finished all, almost all of them, those 25 locations. And we're starting on people on, on facilities that don't have cases, because although it's thought that seniors are most vulnerable, which they are, for example, people over 80 years old are 14%, have a 14% mortality rate or death rate. However, I can tell you from personal experience, my mom, who's at an assisted living site, they had a X number of cases, too. We tested everybody, and they ended up with a lot of cases. But most of the folks, including the seniors, were asymptomatic or had only mild symptoms, and they've almost all gone back to negative now. So it makes the point that you can have this disease and be older and do fine. A, B, we need to test these folks, because we can find out quickly if they're, if they're positive, we can stay on top of them to check their PO2, their blood oxygenation level, et cetera, so we can quickly jump on them if they, if they take a turn for the worse, because we know they're positive. And three, that we can actually stop these outbreaks pretty quickly. So my, the point is that we have worked with nursing homes and the long-term care and assisted living facilities, and are doing a lot with them. And that's part of the criteria, is how well-prepared they are for any kind of outbreaks.
So when you're talking about those facilities, do you lump them all together, skilled nursing, assisted living, independent living, et cetera, they're all one? Or is it just skilled nursing, which is what I usually see?
No, it includes things like assisted living.
Like what?
It includes things like assisted living.
Okay. Then, then one specific question. I had a call from a flea market swap meet that is located in the city of Sacramento on Folsom Boulevard.
Yes, we know.
Had several calls with them. And I haven't been to that particular swap meet or flea market, but the way they describe it, where they're selling toilet paper and baby clothes, and they have food trucks and those sorts of things, which should be allowed, they're all individual vendors that lease a space or rent a space from the underlying landowner. And I'm, why can you go to Target and not go to the flea market?
So your, your point that you made before is very well taken. I think people have learned to make sure they say how many people have, are serving food, for example. I'm not exactly sure, we've actually sent enforcement, by the way, we use 311 for enforcement. Now the police and the sheriff have been very good about, about not leaving people alone. Enforcement goes out on cases that have had more than three complaints. I get them every single week, and we send out enforcement, et cetera. And I can tell you that Folsom has gotten, no offense, not in single amount, but they've gotten a lot of complaints, and that they're not, it's not that they're really serving that much in the way of essential products, it's that they've figured out a way to, to craft their question. So...
Well, it seems, if you go to Roseville, Denio's Market is open, you know, and that's essentially the same thing. So I think that's a confusing comparison.
I can understand that. I'm not, flea markets are explicitly prohibited under the, the order, the phases, but swap meets are not. And that's now under phase two B. So we're working, I think, I hope I've kind of presented some of the quandary that we are under every single day, as you guys are as well. But we're trying our best, basically.
I understand. There's just some things I think we're all experiencing that don't make sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you. And thanks again for your hard work.
Sure.
Supervisor Tully?
Yeah, I wanted to maybe bring this back, and this might be for Nav as well as Dr. Bealsson, but certainly the health order affects, you know, all residents of the county in one way or the other. And we talk about some of the businesses and services essential and various categories for restoring commerce and, and, and social activities. But I guess my question is going to be, we have a workforce of some 12,000, give or take, employees. We've been able to, and certainly your departments are, are good examples of maintaining those essential services. But as relates to ongoing health orders and restoration of some of the services that, you know, would have folks that would either, you know, either come, you know, to our facilities, and/or things that we do in the field. I, you know, I'd see Michael Peterson in the audience, but I think about water resources, I think about roadwork, where folks, you know, typically travel, you know, in, you know, pickups and/or trucks, go out and do that work. We're coming into construction season. Obviously, those maintenance activities have been, you know, certainly prescribed as essential to public health and safety. But what are we looking at as relates to kind of reopening the county and how that affects, you know, service delivery, but also, and another one, Nav and I've talked about this frequently, about our animal shelter, and how we may, you know, accommodate maybe in a different way, certainly with numbers being part of that, social distancing, employee safety. But where are we with all that? Because again, you know, we're one of the largest single employees.
We're working with our, with our department heads, and we're getting ready to give some more guidance on who can start bringing back, given some of the discussions we're having with Dr. Bealsson. So it's all underway, particularly on animal care at this point. We're not contemplating opening that at this point, but given, as things keep changing and consultation with Dr. Bealsson, we could end up in a different spot. Essential services are all, we're providing that. We have folks doing telecommuting, and that's an ongoing discussion almost daily that our HR director and Dr. Bealsson have about county services and what we can open.
I specifically referenced Public Works types of functions. Those are outdoor largely, and sometimes they're interior spaces.
Yeah, but they're, they're performing. So they're doing what, what they need to be doing, is the telecommuting and some of the other ones that we have closed at this point, that we need to go back and start relooking at them.
So we have protocols for folks that travel together. Typically, you don't have, not everybody is assigned a truck. You send people out to fix potholes, for example, they're not all individuals. So we have protocols that allow for employees to travel together?
Yep.
Okay. I know we saw some Dave Devine last week that we were going to get, I guess, I hadn't seen any follow-up. Maybe that's still in the works, but that...
Yeah, we did. We have one contact that came in, and he's been following through that. But we do have protocols that we've put in place.
But, but the order with the stay-at-home would still keep folks that are in the county employ, that are currently at home, at home, it's not going to be bringing anybody back under the order that we're concluding?
We're in discussions about that.
Supervisor Peters?
Yeah, one additional question. I just want to confirm that we're all, and I think you talked about it earlier, but I'm still not clear. So restaurants, the stage two Part B begins five, 20, May 20th?
21st.
21st.
Okay, well, on this attachment, seven, it says the 20th.
It should be the 21st.
Okay, well...
We'll fix that, thank you.
The red line here, so that, okay.
We were going very fast, so...
Oh, I know, I know. That's why I wanted to completely confirm it. So restaurants can reopen for dine-in on the 21st, as long as they have all the...
Right. There's a 12-page thing, which Sharon, I think, sent me yesterday. Anyway, Supervisor, the, there's a 12-page guidelines to Supervisor, for this point. There are literally each sector of the, of the business world has guidelines specific to them, as well as general to the employees, and we're putting them out as rapidly as we can.
On the state website, I've read those.
Yeah, so that, that is one of them.
Well, I just was, want to make clear that that's what we're, so the restaurants need to go to the state webpage, where it shows the conditions for restaurant reopening, so they understand all the safety precautions they need to take.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Frost?
I have a question regarding retail. There are some retail that are reaching out to me. The challenge they have, they may have a consignment store, they may have clothing. And the question they have is, what if we made appointments for people to come into our location, and then we only allowed, you know, so many at a time, and they were able to browse and try on clothes, and then we clean and sanitize in between for 15 minutes with those appoint? The question I have is reopening retail, some, some cannot do curbside. I mean, they have to look through stuff to see if there's something there that they like, type thing.
So phase two B, which we'll be able to be in, includes destination retail. It's not curbside. So I would, I would opine that that's, that's covered.
You're, you're saying what I just described is, is an appropriate business plan?
Is appropriate, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So first of all, I'm going to move the item. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second. Last comments. I want to certainly add my, my thanks to both Dr. Bealsson and our public health officer, Dr. Cassiri, for all of their, their hard work, not just on what's expressly before us today as part of the progressive theme to our response to the pandemic, but for everything that we've been doing now for two and a half months. Today is exactly two months of the day that I sat in this chair and had to deliver an announcement that I never thought we'd have to make, which is that we're, we have a stay-at-home order. And I know the last two months have been very difficult for certainly our constituents, but it's also been a very heavy lift by our public health professionals here in Sacramento County. So I want to thank both doctors and everyone that works for you that has gotten us to this point. One of the clarifying things I'd like you to respond to, Dr. Bealsson, is I think there's probably going to be some excitement about this out in the media and the public today. Just to be clear, please be very surgical, no pun intended, in your response here. What is the action, the action that you're asking us to take today mean? Because I think there may be some that think, we're going to take this action, or we're going to open up. We're, we're just going to, it's, it's the action of the board of supervisors that gives everyone the green light. So I'd like you to, to make very crystal clear what this is and what this isn't.
Yeah, so this is, you are attesting to the validity of the data that we have presented to you, that we meet the, and that we meet the criteria that the state has. That allows us to go further into phase two than we would otherwise have been able to do. That includes things like restaurants, shopping malls, retail, et cetera. Well, not much, et cetera, but that. That does not allow us at this time to move into things like gambling halls or large assemblies or large gatherings or, or hair, even hair salon or hair barber shops. That's the additional phase that will be coming further. So we, we're opening in a judicious manner. We're opening up at least some social settings that people can go back to, but we're trying to do it carefully so that we don't have an explosion of the virus.
And one, one further item also, it's authorized in the chair to sign the letter attesting that, supporting the submission of that to the governor.
So on that point, what is, so with that action that we take, let's, you know, there's a motion of seconds, likely we're going to affirm this. What then happens at the state? Does the state have the final say here in terms of the actual migration into stage two B?
You personally are on the hook, and you'll be held criminally responsible.
There you go.
Call the dry sense of humor.
Right.
I just like the fact that people like Dr. Bealsson and me get to make decisions on when hair salons open.
So it's, it's flexible. I mean, to be honest, they are trying, the way I gather this, is they are trying to keep control, the state. Other jurisdictions are sort of going off the ranch, if you will. And we're trying to be very understanding and working with the state, but trying to push for some flexibility as well. But they, there's no, like, they slap, they don't slap your hand and, and come out and enforce, because we are one of the good guys to them, basically.
I think, Supervisor, the question you're asking is, we're going to send this in, the state has already seen this, Peter's talked to them, is that now they'll have the documentation certifying, that Sacramento County has certified it, its health officials have, the board has confirmed it, that allows us to go to stage two B and for us to amend our health order. So that's the sequence of...
Right, thank you. That's what I'm really after, is making sure that the public understands that sequence. So they, they understand the role between the county and the state, and they just don't think that we're, you know, applying our own science and our standards. This is, this has got to be viewed as a very deliberate partnership with state health officials to make sure that we're meeting the criteria that they set, correct?
Correct. And also, if I could just underscore, we're not rescinding any health order. That's not what we're asking the board to do. We're just asking the board to attest to go to stage two B.
This is a baby step. This is a baby step. Okay. One of the things I brought up with, with the CEO yesterday, is I received a phone call from my good friend Oscar Vegas, the supervisor in Yolo County, and he, he made a very good point. He pointed out the fact that the city of West Sacramento arguably has greater social and economic connection with this side of the river, the city of Sacramento and County Sacramento, than perhaps it does with other far-flung parts of Yolo County. And so what I would like to suggest is that we certainly, as we would with all of the seven cities in our county, we make sure that we coordinate and work with the city of West Sacramento so that they understand the timing of what we're doing in terms of the progression into stage two B and in anticipation of other stages. So as we move forward, make sure we keep them in the loop.
I've talked with Mary Cabal then at least two or three times, and also the Yolo County Health Officer, not Health Officer, Health Director, me of Yolo County. So we've been, we've been communicating quite frequently.
Okay. And we, that's not the only case where we have city-to-city borders with other counties. So are we doing the same with other public health officers for all the adjoining counties?
Yes, Olivia is talking with this surrounding counties.
Okay, great. I think that's all I had. Most of the questions I had have been asked and answered by others. But again, appreciate everyone's hard work. I know this has been a flurry of activity over the last week or so. And there's a few more last comments here from Supervisors. Supervisor Frost?
I just remembered one more question, since you're here. I'll just ask it. I have questions regarding assisted living and the fact that in some assisted living complexes where they have people who live completely independent, then semi-independent, then dependent, and in those communities, they have hairdressers that are up and running and in business. What, how do they get to do that and others can't? How do you...
I don't, I don't know of that. And I can tell you at my mom's, they don't do that anymore. So...
If, if they're doing that, you got to give us their address.
I don't know their address. I bet I'm just being told this. So I was wondering if there was a different rule, like if they're in a hospital.
That's clearly what the governor said, is stage three for hairdressing and all that. If there is, if somebody's doing that...
Particularly for the vulnerable population.
Yeah, exactly. That's not right.
So even if they're in a hospital scenario, the hairdressers are in, in those rest homes in that room down the hall, where they take care of them in their room?
As far as I know, they...
They're not supposed to?
Well, they're not supposed to even be on-site.
Okay.
But if you do have instances...
Offsite just beginning of March.
I just can't emphasize enough, if you know where this is going on, this is something we need to go in, because that is the population we're most worried about. I just can't emphasize enough, if you know where this is going on, this is something we need to go in because that is the population we're most worried about.
The vulnerable. Okay. I will, I will definitely get back if I can find that out. I do not know, but I'll call you.
Supervisor Toney?
Yeah, I didn't intend to follow on this, but so, but if, but if that grooming is essential to health, for example, I'm not, you know, that, there are things that relates to fingernails, toenails, even your hair that are essential to health. I mean, there, there has to be some distinction there as it relates to versus, you know, something more of just-
The elective procedures and elective visits include things like podiatry. That would fall. I think it would be very hard, I mean, salons have talked to me about the fact that they deal with psoriatic arthritis and they need to be able to do that, but that's, that's tiny percent of the population. I mean, basically, podiatry, those sorts of things are health needs and they can be met by the, the current order.
I think if I could just add on, the whole purpose behind this is to keep the population healthy. We all get the phone calls. We all get folks trying to find a way around a clever argument, but some of that we do, we are in education mode, but if it does jeopardize somebody's health, just to be clever about it to get around a rule is not right. And I'm not suggesting that's what you guys are saying, but if that's what you guys are getting, please, please let Peter know, let me know, because that's, that's not right.
Okay. What I wanted to ask you, just on the motion before us, and I think it's an important point. We've had to focus on the restaurants, but in stage two part B, microenterprises, the retail storefronts are open, 10 or less employees, you have to use the social distancing mask for employees, PPE, and as appropriate, so that's what the attestation will be certifying to the state. Is that correct? I'm looking at attachment seven in the yellow column down under retail. It kind of goes to the point that Supervisor Frost was asking about, but I just want to be clear. So it would allow for, because you responded to her on a specific situation, but microenterprises, storefronts.
It says it's in stage two.
In stage two, right. And I mean, so that's, we'll, assuming this gets certified by the state, that they will be able to reopen, but they will also be given guidance relative to PPEs, social distancing, appointment, potentially whatever. So again, that could be good news to some of the smaller businesses.
But there's childcare. That's also included.
Right. But, but we already had retail open for curbside under the previous stage two, which was bookstores.
I just want to make sure it wasn't just limited to what you just mentioned, because there's other items that were opening up in attachment seven.
But microenterprises, that's, you say microenterprises, retail. That's pretty broad. Those businesses, right?
Yeah, it's what the state says, but yes.
I mean, under the state definition, that's what I'm saying. I mean, all the things you talk about.
No, all I was trying to get at is that there's, childcare is another category. When you make the motion, I want to make sure it's encompassing of the whole staff report, not just the items you called out.
Right. But I mean, again, that's good news. Again, I, I raised the issue about, you know, about the Galt Chamber Commerce and, you know, I've heard from a couple of folks down in the Delta, so that assuming you meet that criteria and put in place those protective measures, then they're able to open up?
Yes.
Okay.
One last question. So Supervisor Toney just mentioned real quickly, you know, once this is certified, so there's, so how fast is certification expected?
It's posted. Is it already posted?
About 24 hours.
24 hours.
24 hours.
From the time that we take the action?
From the time we submitted it.
We submitted, yeah, we submitted yesterday.
Okay, got it. So, so we-
You'll be fined for the order.
Gotcha. So we should expect that there'll be a state reaction in terms of the certification or not by today?
Tomorrow at the latest.
Okay. And then lastly, what, one of the things we haven't, you haven't really mentioned much about this morning, Dr. Bealson, is God forbid, we move through the stages and we see some surge of virus activity. So what, what are we doing or planning for that's different now in light of moving, you know, the fact that we're on the precipice of moving through stage, into stage two? What, what do we have available to us to make sure that we can quickly reassess what needs to happen for containment should that happen?
Yeah, so we have the dashboard that's going to be updated daily, which is different than it is currently. So we'll know the statistics quickly, ICU, ventilators, et cetera. Secondly, we need to, we know our surge capacity at any given time. We obviously have a huge surge capacity now because we have so few people in the hospital and there are not that many elective procedures going on. So we have way, way more than enough beds that we need, but we keep them every day. We have a report on them out. And same with ICUs and the same with ventilators. And then they, also, we're going to make sure our contact tracers, if they start getting a surge of cases where we don't have enough of them, we are graduating them through our, through the credentialing program at UCLA and UCSF as we speak, literally today, now, over the next week. There's a 20-hour credentialing program for contact tracers online statewide. And so we're working with some of our county employees and state employees, and we're also going to have Sierra Health Foundation is helping to recruit additional folks if need be to hold them in advance in terms of contact tracing. So we have the contact tracing ready to go already and surge capacity in place for the containment. And secondly, we have all the issue, all the data on a regular, very regular basis.
So back to my initial comment about the importance of doing everything we can to enhance our ability to communicate the changes to the public and post FAQs and continue to build on the good work of our, our website and other means of communicating our response on, to the pandemic. I think we should make it very, very clear to the public that we have a nimbleness, an ability, a capability to respond very quickly if we see any change whatsoever in those critical metrics that you just mentioned, should there be a change in the condition in this community of the pandemic, of virus spread. Because I think there's going to be certainly a segment of the population that is going to express some concern about some of this, and a lot of that may be due to just not understanding it. So again, that's why I stress it's absolutely imperative that we do everything we can to explain all these moving parts.
We've been trying to do that and we'll continue to do that.
Very good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kennedy was punched up. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you. Just a question for a scientist. I keep hearing about the potential for September being another spike. Why is that number, why is that date so magical? I mean, why, why September?
A couple of things. One, that's what the Spanish flu did, and other, other viral, novel viral infections have done that over time. Partly it's because, to be honest, we're loosening up and that's to be expected. Secondly, the flu, let me put out a quick plea that all of you through your offices should, at this year, absolutely push the flu vaccine. Hugely, hugely important for two reasons. Number one, flu gets a lot of people placed in the hospital, particularly a senior vulnerable population. We don't want to have the surge of flu victims. And secondly, we want to have, so we want to have the room for, for coronavirus victims if they, if they, if they come about. But secondly, it's to prevent other underlying severe reactions, severe consequences in the vulnerable populations by getting the flu. So we want to keep them from getting the flu, even though the flu virus has nothing to do with the coronavirus. Coronavirus is a cold virus. The flu virus is a flu, and then multiple sites, types of flu. But even in the flu vaccine not being terribly effective like it is from year to year, it is still effective at preventing the disease and even more important in many ways at decreasing the severity of the disease. So it's really important this year to push the flu vaccine.
So the, the September timeline is based upon past flu numbers, basically?
To, to a large extent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if there's no further questions or comment, yeah.
I don't, I want to belabor the motion. I know, but I just, so on the manufacturing, folks that make products, they were in, in phase two already. Are there protocols that may be clear to folks? But so if you're making, whatever it is, if you're manufacturing, they're, they're allowed to be open and returned to work? Is that correct?
San Luis Obispo did a very good piece that's like 15 sections long in terms of sectors of businesses that can be, and that has generalized information for the employees as well as specific employees. That's what I was talking about in our town hall meeting.
Right.
We're going to get that out. But that includes manufacturing. It includes manufacturing.
Supervisor Toney, on manufacturing, from day one, we've been working very closely with them and with Dr. Bealson and his department on what was the appropriate process and what they needed to do. So we have a pretty robust program with them.
Okay. And the FAQ or the, you know, the guidelines, it's important, and again, I appreciated the clarification a moment ago on the microenterprises, but I think that would be very helpful. Sometimes people can go to, take a look at, here's what I have to do for my employees. I can have a storefront operation, you know, what's recommended and what, you know, and what's, you know, clear guidance rather than trying to wade through a whole lot of pages. I think that would be helpful, Dr. Bealson.
I understand.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
We have a motion in a second. I do have, and I want to make sure I have this correct with the clerk, two public comments for item 32. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. If there are no further questions or comments by board members, there's a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Great, thank you. And you do have the letter that I signed in advance of-
I've read it.
Okay, great. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Bealson. Thank you, Dr. Kessiri. Thanks to all of our public health folks for the fine work you're continuing to do.
Can you turn your mic on? Item 33 is the Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property for Florin Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Improvements Project. The first property owner is Carl's Jr.'s Restaurants located at 7151 Franklin Boulevard. The second property owner is Home Depot USA located at 4641 Florin Road. Third is Vinod Paul, 5500 Florin Road. Burlington Coat Factory Realty of Florin Incorporated, 5601 Florin Road. Seritage SRC Finance, 5901 Florin Road. And the Preacher Family Trust, Raj and Sani family trust, Rajinder and Sita Sharma, Darrell Dixon located at 6901 Florin Road. And the environmental document is a categorical exemption.
If there's no need for a public hearing on this, then I move staff recommendation.
Okay. So do, and we have a motion by Director Kennedy and a second by Director Peters, and I'm assuming we may not need an abbreviated, would you like to just give an abbreviated, just, oh, you don't wish?
Call the question.
There, there is one difference in the recommendation that I think he would probably need to address.
Okay, thank you.
So sorry to interrupt, but that, I think that will be needed. And may I also, may I also let you guys know that you do need to take separate motions for all, for each property? Okay, thank you.
Yes. Good morning, Chair Serna and members of the board. I'm Peter Hannan, Program Manager, Acquisitions in the Real Estate Division. And I'm here today to introduce this item, which recommends approval for six resolutions of necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property interests for the Department of Transportation's Florin Road Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Improvements Project. Project involves construction-
Can I, can I interrupt you? Because I think the point that the board's trying to make is that they are, they don't need your presentation, but you do have one item that is not going to be acted on, so you can just point that out.
I would like to drop item number two for Home Depot USA Incorporated located at 460, 4641 Florin Road. We have fully executed acquisition documents at this point in time, so no need to continue with the further action.
Do we need to vote on that? So we do have a motion to drop?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded by Kennedy and Peters. Please vote.
And this will reflect very well on council's job evaluation.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so- As you said, just separate motions on each of the other remaining five items.
Six. She's going to read the APNs and-
Okay, so at this time, for property number one, Carl's Jr., this is APN 042015002.
So move.
Second.
Please vote. Unanimous vote with those members present. For property three, this is Vinod Paul. This is APN 0500271018.
So move.
Second.
Please vote. I think you're getting who's moving and seconding, so.
Yeah.
Unanimous vote with those members present. Fourth property is Burlington Coat Factory Realty of Florin Road. This is APN 0420012044.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please vote. Unanimous vote with those members present. Seritage SRC Finance, APN 0420011009.
So move.
Second.
Please vote. Unanimous vote with those members present. And the final one is the Preacher Family Trust. And the APN is 0430126001.
So move.
Second.
Please vote. Thank you. Hey, unanimous vote with those members present, and that is the final vote for item 33.
Okay, next item, please.
Okay. Item 34, trying to get there. Are your appointments from your own ranks to the Regional Water Authority?
I was going to suggest if someone else wants to take this, I won't be able to serve the whole term, or maybe you would just bring it up again in January? Someone else wants to take it. So Patrick volunteered.
Okay, Patrick?
Isn't that what you said? I don't think I did.
Would you like to?
I'd be glad to do it.
Okay. Patrick Kennedy. And are we reappointing Carrie Schmitz as the alternate?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Yes. Carrie gets to go to the meetings.
That's right.
Okay, and we need a motion in a second. So we have a motion from-
I'll move.
Second.
You'll second yourself?
Yes.
Great. I'll vote, please. Unanimous vote with those members present. Okay, and now we are at your nominations. So that's item 35. You are continuing to July 14th, the Rio Linda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your matters today, you have the Adult and Aging Commission. Supervisor Frost?
I have the chiefs recommend nominating Shandra Alston and Irving Hellman continue the remainder of July 14th?
Yes. Thank you. I don't have the, so go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Cemetery Advisory Commission? Please defer to the June 16th. Yes. And then we have Supervisor Natoli.
I don't have any members that continue to June 16th. Is that correct?
Yeah.
The cemetery advisory, I don't have any.
And then we have the public member. Supervisor Peters or Mr. Serna?
Where are we at?
We're on Cemetery Advisory Commission on the public seat.
There's no act-
Chiefs recommend continuing the public member vacancy until July 14th.
Okay. Children's Coalition?
Chiefs recommend nominating Linda Howe-Ram to the Children's Coalition.
Okay. Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Natoli?
I'd like to hold that over to June 16th, please.
Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council?
Same there.
Elk Grove Consumnis Cemetery District?
Just give me a moment. Okay, I'd like to nominate Jessica Green and Margaret Peggy Forsythe-Anders.
And the Galt, Galt Arno Cemetery District?
Hold at the June 16th, please.
And then last is the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Mr. Serna?
Chiefs recommend continuing this item until July 14th.
Okay, that concludes your nominations.
Okay. Next item?
County Executive Comments?
No, no comments.
Okay, great, thanks. Supervisor Kennedy? Supervisor Kennedy, before we go to your comment, I do have a letter from the Sacramento Central Labor Council, and also it's co-signed by the leadership of both Sacramento CLC and also Center for Workers' Rights. And it's a somewhat lengthy letter, but they have asked that I read it into the record. And as I coordinated with the clerk of the board, I want to read this into the record per their express direction and request to do so. And I wanted to do it at the end so that we didn't interrupt the flow of earlier items. So I'm going to go ahead and do that now. So if you could, please just bear with me here. Again, from Sacramento CLC and Center for Workers' Rights regarding worker and consumer protections and reopening. Dare Supervisor Serna. Sacramento Central Labor Council AFL-CIO-SCLC is a coalition of over 100 labor unions representing over 180,000 union members for 130 years in Sacramento, Yolo, Placer, Eldorado, Nevada, and Abner counties. Founded in 2014, the Center for Workers' Rights, the CWR, represents low-wage workers in Sacramento on workplace issues, including wage theft, paid sick days, and unemployment insurance benefits. Since March 19th, 2020, the SCLC and CWR have operated, have operated the Coronavirus Job Protection Helpline, which has received more than 3,500 calls about rights and benefits during this pandemic. We are writing to express the labor community's proposal for how to ensure worker and consumer safety now and when the county authorizes more business to reopen. First, we applaud the county for the efforts it has taken to ensure public health throughout this pandemic. The county has issued timely public health orders that have resulted in the Sacramento area having the lowest infection rates for all large metropolitan areas in the country. The county has taken an important lead in ensuring that our community's public health is the number one priority. However, it is important that those safety considerations continue as the county is looking towards opening many industries and adjusting the current shelter-in-place order. Specifically, it is essential that the county take efforts to protect all employees in the county, those that have been working as essential workers and those who are getting ready to return to work. The Central Labor Council has developed a package of ordinances and worker and consumer protections that we propose that the county adopt as an emergency order to ensure that workers and consumers are safe and that there is not a regression of the progress that the county has made. Proposed policies. Number one, any county financial assistance be conditioned on worker safety. We understand that the county may consider providing financial assistance to small businesses who have suffered due to COVID-19. However, any financial assistance must be tied to assisting employers in providing a safe environment for, for its workers. Financial assistance should be specifically earmarked for the following. One, personal protective equipment for employees such as masks, gloves, hand sanitizer. Two, availability of paid sick leave, including emergency paid sick leave related to COVID-19. Furthermore, in order to receive any assistance, the county should require employers to provide a copy of their social distancing protocol and certify that it will comply with all requirements of all of the workers and consumer safety requirements enacted by the county. Number two, COVID-19 emergency paid sick leave. The next component of our proposal is for the county to enact an ordinance requiring all employees in the county who are not covered by the Family First Coronavirus Recovery Act, the FFCRA, to provide emergency paid sick leave for employees who need to leave because of COVID-19. The federal government enacted the FFCRA effective April 1st, 2020, requiring employers to provide up to 80 hours of emergency paid sick leave for employees who are unable to report to work because they have COVID-19, have symptoms, or otherwise are directed by public health officers or doctor to quarantine, to care for a family member who has COVID-19 or who was directed or recommended to quarantine, or to care for a child whose school or daycare has closed a result, as a result of COVID-19. However, this law exempted employers who have more than 500 employees throughout the county, country, and allows for an exemption for employers with less than 50 employees. These exemptions have left many employees unprotected if they need leave due to COVID-19 purposes. We propose in the attached proposed ordinance that the county of Sacramento adopt an emergency ordinance that would require all employers that are exempt from the FFCRA to provide up to 80 hours of COVID-19 emergency paid sick leave for the purposes set forth in the FFCRA, and also include for employees who are over 65 or medically vulnerable and have a doctor's recommendation to quarantine. The ordinance would require employees to provide, to provide pay at an employee's full-time rate when taking leave for their own illness or need to quarantine, and a two-thirds pay when using leave to care for a family member. In addition, the ordinance would require employers to provide job protection for up to 90 days for employees who take leave under these circumstances. This is an essential component to a safe reopening for workers. Unfortunately, many cases of COVID-19 have originated at people's workplaces because employees come to work sick. Public health officials have stated that one of the most important workplace policies is to direct employees not to come to work if they are feeling sick or have any symptoms of COVID-19. However, in the current environment, there are individuals, where individuals are very worried about financial stability, many employees may not miss work if it means loss of pay or the possibility they will lose their jobs. For that reason, it is imperative that all employees, including those of large and small employers, be entitled to pay, paid, to paid and protected leave so they do not have to make the decision between staying home and maintaining their job and pay. Other communities in the state have recognized the need to fill in the holes left by the FFCRA by adopting similar ordinances. The city and county of San Francisco, city of San Jose, city of Oakland, city of Los Angeles, city of Long Beach have all adopted local emergency paid sick leave ordinances, recognizing the great need to ensure that all employees have access to paid leave under these circumstances. Number three, worker health and safety protocol. The county public health order effective May 1st, 2020, required all employer, all employers that are currently open to create a social distancing protocol for its specific locations and based on its business. Employers are required to post the protocol so that employees and visitors are aware of this. This is vital to ensuring that employees are protected and to reduce the likelihood of spread of the virus in the workplace. However, many employers are not aware of this requirement and are not abiding by the rule. Therefore, the ordinance should very clearly state that employers must abide by the protocol or be subject to enforcement from the county. Number four, right to refuse unsafe work. The next component of the Central Labor Council's proposed ordinance is to adopt an ordinance that prohibits discipline, discrimination, or retaliation against any employee who refuses to work because of an unsafe condition. Specifically, the ordinance would provide that employer, an employer cannot take any such action against an employee who refuses to work because the employer does not have a social distancing protocol as required by the county or is not complying with their protocol. This is, this is a necessary component to ensure that employees are protected if employers are not following the established best practices for maintaining a safe workplace during this pandemic. Without this protection, employees are in a situation where they have to decide to put their health at risk or work in an unsafe condition, or put their job at risk by not working. This ordinance would remove that impossible choice and instead provide protection for employees whose employer is not abiding by the county's requirements. Number five, right to work, right to retention. The next critical piece of our comprehensive plan is to adopt a county ordinance that requires that all employer, all employees have the right to return and the right to retention. As you know, as a result of COVID-19, many employers have laid off employees because of loss of business or because they are not in essential business. As employers are starting to reopen, it is important that laid off employees be offered the right to return to their position by seniority order. There are circumstances where employees are off, employees are offering return to the lowest paid, I think they meant employers, employers are offering return to the lowest paid employees. This is unacceptable. Therefore, we are proposing this ordinance that would require that all employees who were laid off since March 4th, 2020 due to COVID-19 are entitled to their same position or substantially similar position when the employer is reopening. Again, other local jurisdictions have enacted similar protections. The county of Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles, and the city of Long Beach have all adopted a right to return ordinance. We all understand that the city and county of San Francisco and the city of Oakland are also considering similar proposals. Number six, county funds for employer, employee education. Finally, it is critical that the county devote funding to education, employers and employees about these essential requirements as they reopen so that they are enacted and complied with. The CLC, along with the Center for Workers' Rights and other community partners, will work to inform employees, but it is vital that the county also provide notification and education, particularly to employers, so that they are aware of what they must do to comply. Thank you for the opportunity to provide our proposal. We believe that these measures must be included as part of any effort to substantially reopen business in the community by protecting all workers and the public as a whole. We respectfully ask that this letter be read into the record of the county board of supervisors' meeting. We look forward to working with the county to adopt these important ordinances. Sincerely, Fabrizio Sasso, Executive Director, Sacramento Central Labor Council AFL-CIO, and Daniella Urban, Executive Director for the Center for Workers' Rights, and the CCs are two of my colleagues, Mr. Gill and Ms. Travis. So, again, wanted to save that to the end because it was a fairly lengthy read. Want to express my appreciation to both the Central Labor Council and the Center for Workers' Rights for giving a lot of thought to this. I've had one conversation with their leadership about the proposal. What I'd like to suggest, and this is part of leading to our comments here, is that I begin by having a dedicated conversation with our CEO, Mr. Gill. You and I can meet and talk about this further. We haven't had that opportunity yet since this just arrived, but I would like to kind of get a sense from you about what they're proposing and what your reaction or what your sense is of what we might be able to do to consider some of what, or all of what they're proposing. So with that, Mr. Kennedy, thanks for your patience.
No, I support your direction there. I, I wanted to just say that it sounds from hearing from Dr. Bealison that we're in this for a year, you know, in one way or another, you know, we're going to relax, obviously. But I think if we go back to business as usual after this is over, that we've made a huge mistake. And I'd like to, through the chair, I would like to suggest that the CEO establish some kind of a executive committee to look at how we can change the way that we do business as a county. I was talking with James Corliss the other day of Secog, and if we got 10% of the people off of the roads, the air quality, you know, would be tremendously different than it is today. And I think that we can do that. I think we're getting used to using the technology of Zoom and all of the other platforms that, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm on 40 now, 41, thank you, Susan Peters, commissions. And I, you know, if, if we could just take a fraction of those meetings that we do every day and, you know, throughout the county and minimize those and start doing more technology-based meetings when we're through this, I think that it would be a huge change in our county and the way we do business. So I, I'd like the, the CEO to consider looking at taking what we've learned through this pandemic and how we can institutionalize some of these things in a way that is, is, you know, just a more efficient way of doing business.
Okay. We'll look into it.
Thank you, sir.
Good idea.
Any other comments and suggestions?
I have a couple adjournments, but wait.
Mr. Gill?
Yeah, no adjourn, just a quick question. Now, you and I have spoken, and I know, you know, staff was looking at it, but we had an item on our regional sanitation agenda last week relative to the late payments and folks who were in some fiscal distress and, you know, waiving penalties, not necessarily late charges, but, and we have two utilities that we operate, obviously the water agency and the solid waste recycling. And again, to some of the points we made here earlier in our discussion, that there's a sustained impact to this, and whether it's a homeowner, a resident, or a business owner, and I guess I'd like for our consideration, certainly before we go into any recess for the summer break, to know where we are, because we're now getting to a period of time where we're two months in, and if there's business impacts and/or residential impacts, there would certainly be a fiscal consideration, but to know how we, how we're going to deal with that with regard to our utilities. I know you've been working on it, but I would like to see that.
Yeah, we're working with the state. When we have clear guidance from it, we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay, because some of those are going to begin to accrue, people that are getting behind. That was, that's my point. And so then you have another task, if we do something different, where there has to be then some going back and reaccounting for that. And so I guess I'd like to see us, rather than get too far into it, to at least have some consideration, recognizing even working with the state. So I, again, there's some timeliness to this from a lot of friends. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or suggestions from board members? If not, we have an adjournment by Secretary Peters.
Thank you. First, I have two adjournments today, and the first one is that I want to adjourn in memory of Mike Ziegler. Pride Industry, which services businesses and facilities in Sacramento County, including the American River Parkway and Sacramento International Airport, lost its CEO last week with the passing of Mike. He had run Pride Industries for 37 years. As you know, Pride Industries provides job opportunities for individuals with disabilities. He joined the organization in 1983, and under his tenure, it grew from a small nonprofit with 65 employees into a national organization with more than 5,600 employees, 3,300 of them of whom have disabilities. Through his leadership, he transformed a sleepy nonprofit organization into the largest nonprofit employer of people with disabilities in America. He accomplished that by dedicating his life to making the world a better place by creating opportunities for people who need a helping hand. Pride Industries and those who Mike worked with over the years and those disabled individuals who are given that helping hand to have the dignity of being employed and productive mourn his passing. He's survived by his wife of 37 years, Debbie, and their two sons, and their wives, and two grandchildren. In recognition of Michael Ziegler's contributions to Pride Industries and how his leadership has benefited so many disabled individuals, not only here within Sacramento but in our region, I think it's fitting that we adjourn today in his memory.
Good guy.
My second adjournment is in memory of Bruce Feit. Last month, our region lost a leader with the passing of Bruce, who's a founder and former president of one of Sacramento region's bigness industrial, biggest industrial development firms, Feit Development Company. During his tenure, it's estimated he built 10 million square feet of industrial space. And though he made a living as a developer, Mr. Feit considered flying his first passion. After building a custom home and doing land work in Arkansas, as a young man, he came to Sacramento in 1968 as a test pilot at then McClellan Air Force Base, where he stuck up, struck up a friendship with developer Buzz Oats, who'd been a pilot during World War II. Inspired by the Buzz Oats example, Bruce formed his own development company in 1970, and for the first 10 years specialized in tilt-up warehouses. Among his early project were the first warehouses on Bradshaw Road, as well as the raw land for what became Prospect Park and Rancho Cordova. He often put his piloting skills to use when he and Buzz Oats flew up and down Highway 99 in the 1970s, looking for Central Valley locations. He enjoyed telling stories about his flying experience, among them flying reconnaissance planes over Cuba in the 1960s during what became the Cuban Missile Crisis, and flying air support during the Berlin Airlift in the 1940s. He retired from the company as CEO in 2007 and still occasionally weighed in on company matters. He was also involved in charitable giving to both his church and other ministries. So he was part of a generation that helped shape our region's landscape, and I'd like to move that the board adjourn in his memory also.
Thank you. Supervisor Kennedy?
I just want to echo the, the former and say that Ziggy will be sorely missed in this community. He was a great man. I had the privilege of working with him for 25 years, and there's, there's never been another one like him, so thank you.
Yeah, he was terrific.
Good guy. All right, if there's no further business before this board, we will adjourn in memory of Mike Ziegler and Bruce Feit, and we are adjourned to closed session.